We'll call our meeting to order. I welcome everybody this evening. We're very excited to be joined by a number of students, their families, dozens of professional educators. We're here to celebrate all of you and do some of our business. So, happy Thanksgiving. And to get it started, we will take a roll.
Yes, Madam President, all board members are here and we have a quorum.
Wonderful. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a number of very, very special presentations this evening. And first, we're going to begin with our Young Artist Awards. And Dr. Dudley is going to present these awards.
Good evening.
And Mr. Ryan Newman's going to assist.
(laughing). Tonight is my pleasure to honor our young artists. And as you can see, the work behind us, we have our Young Artist work up in our boardroom and we'll have it up here for the next six months. So, we're very excited that our young artists share their work with us to, that we can enjoy in our boardroom. First, I'd like to acknowledge our art teachers. If we have art teachers in the audience, if you would please stand.[102.81][102.81](applause). And thank you to our art teachers who do a great job each day with our young artists and really work to develop their talent. And as you can see, we have some very talented ones. So, as I call your name, if you would come up and get your certificate from Dr. Wall, and then stand up here and when we're finished with everybody, you'll have the opportunity to shake the board's hand. And we'll have an opportunity to applaud for all of them. First, we have Sophia Anthony, a second grade student at Carmel Elementary. Kathleen Ho, an 11th grade student at Carmel High School. Nithya Stanley, a 7th grade student at Carmel Middle School. Ella Asher, a 5th grade student at Cherry Tree. Sophie Wadak, a 7th grade student at Clay Middle School. Lila McKay, a 5th grade student at College Wood. Faith Lawrence, an 8th grade student at Creekside Middle School. Sidney Walls, a 2nd grade student at Forestale. Will Hartzok, a 3rd grade student at Mohawk Trails. Jackie Mayberry, a 2nd grade student at Orchard Park. Reagan Haynes, a 3rd grade student at Prairie Trace. Grace Zhang, a 5th grade student at Smokey Row. Camille Capsulis, a 5th grade student at Town Meadow. Maxwell Yee, a 5th grade student at West Clay. And Elliot Sell, a 2nd grade student at Woodbrook. Students, fabulous work. Congratulations to our young artists.[294.02][294.02](applause).
Next on the agenda, we have the Carmel Education Foundation Fall Grant Recipients. And we have Mrs. Danquist and Mrs. McDonald who are going to present those awards.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Danquist and Stephanie McDonald and I, co-executive directors of the Carmel Education Foundation. It gives us great pleasure to be able to stand up here again and to announce the grant winners for the fall of 2015. Because of your support from the community and the parents and the district, we've been able to award two different sets of grants, one in the spring and now this one in the fall. So, without further ado, we're going to turn it over to our Grant Committee Chair, Cara Kapke, and she's going to introduce our teachers that have won this time period.
Thanks, Barb. If ever you have a question about the exciting and innovative things that your teachers and educators are doing here at Carmel, take a look at these grant applications. I only wish we had more money to give. So, on that note, please make sure to turn in those forms when you get a call for the telethon, go to Ghosts and Goblins, go to the showcase, raise lots of money for CEF because your teachers are doing incredible, amazing things. So, our first grant recipient is from Orchard Park Elementary, Kelly Flagger and Renee Moyer with Rhonda Turner for the principal. They are doing a Mobile Maker Space with Maker Space materials. I don't think they're here today. Next up is from Prairie Trace Elementary, Jill Ship, who I did see. And she put in for a grant for boogie boards, which are a great writing tool that I think the elementary school students are going to get great use out of. Stephanie Swartentuber at Clay Middle School, applied for a Maker Space 3D printer and I cannot wait to see how this is used in the classroom. Another Maker Space program was put in for Carly Worthman, Beth Lefler, Nicole Peterson, and Lila J. at Carmel Middle School. And then we have some group of teachers' grants. For an expression-expanding tool, we have Jennifer Adams, Suzie Ross, Amy Davis, Amy Johnson, and Rhonda Turner. This is a great tool and I'm excited to see these teachers get this award. For RAS Kids Digital Books, Darla Aston, Lori Mitchell, Allison McClatchy, and Kelly Davis, the principal at Woodbrook Elementary School. Another Maker Space program, which is a grant that we awarded last year, and we're just delighted to see the number of Maker Space programs being implemented in these schools. Sarah Fernkis at Carmel Elementary with Vanessa Trammell, Jill Hall, and Principal Megan At Clay Middle School, Abigail Ferretti, Joey McGill, Deva Anderson Peck, and Principal Todd Crosby. At Clay Middle and Carmel High School, applied for activities for vocational life skills and activities. Thank you for applying for this grant. A Writing Clicks and Lego Story Starters grant was one we awarded to Lori Hayes, Becky Campbell, Hella Rumslack, and Lori Storer, the principal at Mohawk Trails Elementary School. And they're making their way up. This is a really neat program, to use Legos to encourage writing. Another expanding expression tool was awarded for Clay Middle School with Sarah Hodson, Erin Boyce, and Jeff Nos at Clay Middle School with Todd Crosby as the principal. The next grant we awarded was actually written by a Carmel High School student. Yu Chenhui is a student in Dan Marvel's AP Biology class and he wrote this grant that we awarded. Really exciting stuff. Congratulations to Dan and Yu Chen. Our next grant goes to Carmel Middle School for a Full Steam Ahead Maker Space Award to Kristen Taylor, Tammy Bulbutsky, Kaylee Houlihan, Jared Hudda, Doug Keigho, and Principal Lila J. at Carmel Middle. I think she's making her way up here. A lot of great scientific innovation and innovative projects to get students involved in STEAM and STEM activities that are really exciting to see. Which is the next project, a supervolcanoes project for Carmel High School with Keith Turner, Mitch Kane, Andrea Pinkerton, Drew Grimes, and Principal John Williams. Then we have a couple individual teacher grants. Matt Muller at Carmel Middle School is up next with a GoPro camera with some very innovative ways to use the GoPro camera inside the classroom. We look forward to seeing some of those videos. We also awarded an iPad to Jessica Nickem at Prairie Trace with Jill Ship as her principal. An iTech AV Club is going to get off the ground thanks to a grant we're awarding to Kyle Schullenberg at Town Meadow Elementary School. Eric Valentine is the assistant principal there. Congratulations. And then our final grant was awarded to Lila Torp at Carmel High School for a Design Tools Grant. We're excited to see this win as well. So, thank you very much for your support in the community and we thank all of these grant winners and applicants for their innovation and the excitement that they bring to teaching and educating. And we're excited to see what you do with these grants.
Students who might be walking out, there are cookies in the back that you are welcome to enjoy. Congratulations. Can you take a picture with my phone too?
Of course. I want you.
Ready? Oh, make sure you hold it up. There we go.
My daughter happened to win that.
And then I want to get one more, which is you, okay?
Yeah.
Is it you?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll suck it in. Ready? Oh, here we go.
One, two, three.
Yes.
All right, cool. Congratulations, buddy.
Come on, one more. Come on.
Sorry. Let me get on the other side.
Good job, Will.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Is that her jersey?
Oh, no, there it is. I got you on the table.
And I got one with her getting the award too.
And this week, cut them all up.
Let's see those.
She did a great job. She always does. Just both of your girls have been wonderful.
So much. I love it. Now, will this be able to get this?
Yes. But they'll have it up here for like six months and then they'll...
I think now they may have it back too.
Oh, this is so nice. Oh, thank you so much.
I enjoy your girls.
Oh, I'm glad. Sarah, Mrs. [inaudible].
Yeah, I'll get it back to you too.
I'm not going to love on you. Get close. We'll get to the side.
Oh, sorry.
Stand right here.
Hello, audience?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're going to do it right now.
Yeah, I'm going to go in too.
Come on up. Hello, audience? If I could have just a moment of silence? Excuse me.
Get one more recognition.
Excuse me, we have one more recognition that...
Here, I want one.
Excuse me. Excuse me, we have one more recognition and then we will actually recess for about five minutes for additional conversation and pictures. So, if we could have the podium area clear for a moment, we have a very special update on our Spotlight on Excellence. And it would be a perfect ACT score by one of our students at Carmel High School. And we have Mr. Williams who has some very kind words to share.
Thank you, and I promise you, this will be worth the cookie weight.[855.01][855.01](laughing). You know, throughout the year, I'm honored to be able to come up here and talk about some amazing things that happened at Carmel High School and in our district. And tonight is certainly no exception. I'd like to welcome Ion Mitra, Ion Mitra, to the podium up here. As Leila said, Ion scored a perfect 36 on his ACT test.[880.01][880.01](applause). It puts him in the top 1% of over 2 million students who took this test last year in Indiana. There were 27,000, over 27,000 students took the test. Only 94 of them earned a perfect score. The average score, his was 36, that's the perfect score. The average in Indiana is 26.1 or 22.1, and the average in the nation is 22. So, it's an amazing accomplishment and we're very proud of him and what he represents, not just for himself and his family, but for our school and our school district. And the thing that's really neat is Ion is just a junior at Carmel High School. So, I don't know how he's going to get better on the ACT, but we're going to find some way to challenge this young man. Congratulations.[936.13][936.13](applause).
We'll take a few-minute break. If there are others who'd like to have a, take a couple pictures with their artwork or with Dr. Wall or Mr. Williams, please feel free to do so. And there are still cookies in the back if you'd like some cookies.
Seeing that we do not have anybody wishing to participate in public participation, we will proceed with consent.
May I get an approval for consent? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. At this moment, I will suspend the regular board meeting and open a public hearing to allow for public input regarding the proposed additional appropriations for the 2015 General Fund and Referendum Fund. On October 26, Mr. McMichael presented a proposed additional appropriations on the 2015 General Fund and Referendum Fund and asked the board to authorize the administration to advertise for the public hearing. Mr. McMichael, would you like to make any comments about this at this point in time?
Just that I would note that this appropriation process gives the administration and board authority to spend revenue that we already have. So, this has no impact on taxes or additional funding. It's really a process to give authorization to use the existing funds.
Thank you. At this time, I will offer members of the community an opportunity to speak. If you'd like to join us at the podium, just state your name and address for the record and we will wait one minute. Seeing that there's nobody wishing to approach the podium and speak with regards to the General Fund and the Referendum Fund appropriations, we're going to close the hearing. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the adoption resolution of additional appropriations for the 2015 General Fund and Referendum Fund. Mr. McMichael?
Yes, this now is the action that's necessary in order to complete this process and the part of this group there.
Thank you. May I get a motion on the table to approve the adoption of the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have the change orders that finishes for the remodel and the fire alarms at Carmel High School. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This is a de-duct change order in the amount of $56,277 and it closes out these contracts.
May I get a motion on the table?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have change orders. The roof replacement at Mohawk Trails Elementary School. Mr. McMichael?
Yes, this is also a de-duct change order in the amount of $75,000 and it's also closing out that project.
Thank you, Roger. May I get a motion on the table to approve the de-duct?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? We appreciate you being fiscally responsible and returning funds to Big Fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we have, excuse me, the agreement between Carmel Clay Public Library and Carmel Clay Schools. Mr. McMichael?
Thank you. This is, was presented to the board previously for discussion. The, back in 1996, the school district sold what they thought was five acres of property to the, to the library board, which is the location of the current library. Later, it was discovered that the transfer amounted to six acres of property and that sixth acre is part of the parking lot and the entryway into Carmel Elementary School. So, what these documents are doing is really correcting that situation and it, it deeds the property back to the school corporation. And that's a little complicated because it's also to a holding corporation because as the board knows, when we, when you have a debt on a facility or on property, then there's a holding corporation that's also involved. At the same time, the property is being used as an exit point for the parking lot at the library and has been for some time now. And so, the documents here would provide an easement to the library so that they can continue to use the property as they're currently using it. And it would also give the library the first right of refusal should the school district ever sell the property. And likewise, should the library ever sell their property, it gives the school district first right of refusal for their property. So, beyond that, there's a lot of legal information that David Day has provided to in creating these documents, but that's, that's the essence of what this is about.
Great, thank you, Roger. May I get a motion on the table to approve the agreement between Carmel Clay Public Library and the Carmel Clay Schools?
I move that the board approve the agreement between Carmel Clay Public Library and Carmel Clay Schools, subject to finalization of the documents with the other parties.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I do have one point of discussion and a comment that I had to the easement agreement, that the easement agreement be for access to the lot, to the library as it has been. And the additional item that we need to discuss is that it be limited to ingress and egress for a public library, which I think is the intent. And it would just require that if the library would sell their property to somebody else, that that easement would, in essence, go away. We could always grant another easement to that potential buyer. And also, the other normal concern that you'd have with an easement is access out of the property and that wouldn't be a concern because they're on Main Street and the other street. So, it's just kind of to limit, protect ourselves from the future since we don't know what we will be doing with the property or what they will be doing with the property in five, 10, 25 years. So, David Day had, had considered it, didn't think it was necessary. My thought is that it doesn't hurt to include that language into the agreement.
And then it's my understanding, per your conversation and the email exchange that we'd seen, you are speaking with David Day to have that language formalized? Is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
He will, he wanted to get our approval to...
Move ahead.
Move forward and deal with these other things. And so, this is one more thing that will be discussed with the library board and both of the building corporation boards.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, well, that sounds fantastic. Then, we'll take a vote on the agreement between Carmel Clay Public Library and Carmel Clay Schools with the addition of language that supports what David Day was continuing to work on. Agreed? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we run, we are jumping to discussion and we've got a couple policies that Pam is going to be discussing with us.
The first one is Policy 4410.01, Compensation for Part-Time Staff. As Leila was discussing this, as we were discussing this and we were going over policies, we're trying to consolidate policies and...
The, back in 1996, the school district sold what they thought was five acres of property to the library board, which is the location of the current library. Later, it was discovered that the transfer amounted to six acres of property and that sixth acre is part of the parking lot and the entryway into Carmel Elementary School. So what these documents are doing is really correcting that situation and it dees the property back to the school corporation and that's a little complicated because it's also to a holding corporation because as the board knows, when you have a debt on a facility or on property, then there's a holding corporation that's also involved. At the same time, the property is being used as an exit point for the parking lot at the library and has been for some time now. And so the documents here would provide an easement to the library so that they can continue to use the property as they're currently using it. And it would also give the library the first right of refusal should the school district ever sell the property. And likewise, should the library ever sell their property, it gives the school district first right of refusal for their property. So beyond that, there's a lot of legal information that David Day has provided in creating these documents, but that's the essence of what this is about.
Great, thank you, Roger. May I get a motion on the table to approve the agreement between Carmel Clay Public Library and the Carmel Clay Schools?
I move that the board approve the agreement between Carmel Clay Public Library and Carmel Clay Schools, subject to finalization of the documents with the other parties.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I do have one point of discussion and a comment that I had to the easement agreement, that the easement agreement be for access to the library as it has been. And the additional item that we need to discuss is that it be limited to ingress and egress for a public library, which I think is the intent. And it would just require that if the library would sell their property to somebody else, that that easement would, in essence, go away. We could always grant another easement to that potential buyer. And also, the other normal concern that you'd have with an easement is access out of the property and that wouldn't be a concern because they're on Main Street and the other street. So it's just kind of to limit, protect ourselves from the future since we don't know what we will be doing with the property or what they will be doing with the property in five, 10, 25 years. So David Day had considered it, didn't think it was necessary. My thought is that it doesn't hurt to include that language into the agreement.
And then it's my understanding, per your conversation and the email exchange that we've seen, you are speaking with David Day to have that language formalized? Is that correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
He will, he wanted to get our approval to-
Move ahead.
Move forward and deal with these other things. And so this is one more thing that will be discussed with the library board and both of the building corporation boards.
Okay. Does anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, well, that sounds fantastic. Then we'll take a vote on the agreement between Carmel Clay Public Library and Carmel Clay Schools with the addition of language that supports what David Day was continuing to work on. Agreed? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we run, we are jumping to discussion and we've got a couple policies that Pam is going to be discussing with us.
The first one is Policy 4410.01, Compensation for Part-Time Staff. As Leila was discussing this, as we were discussing this and we were going over policies, we're trying to consolidate policies and get rid of policies that aren't necessary. We've noticed that this one is duplicated in 4400, therefore, this particular policy is really not necessary and so we would like to delete this policy.
Thank you, Pam. Any discussion on this particular policy, Part-Time 4410.01? Okay, next?
Hold on, I just lost it.
Okay.
Way to go me.
First reading for Policy 5531, The Student Assistance Program.
Yes, The Student Assistance Program. We are deleting a lot of language that we have discussed with Dr. Wall and Dr. Dudley and have decided that this is a lot of redundant language, not necessarily, it's just general language, it's not necessary to the policy. And so we would like to put into the policy the addition of the red language. Educational programs have been established to ensure a productive learning environment and continue that with however the board recognizes that other forms of assistance need to be available through the district. So instead of all of the extra language, we're going to have, Dr. Wall will be developing administrative guidelines to ensure that these assistance programs are carried out.
This particular policy was rather unique because it included the policy as well as the administrative guidelines all combined into one. And as we were trying to streamline our policies to be more applicable to what we're doing, and then the administrative guidelines are found elsewhere but linked on each policy, we went ahead, the administration went ahead, actually rewrote their guidelines, removed them from this policy and edited them as well. So we still have the administrative guidelines, they're just-
Not in the policy.
Not in policy. Or won't be in policy until we approve this, that is. Are there any discussion questions about this particular policy? Well, excellent, thank you very much. It was our plan to bring these to our December board meeting, so if you have any questions or concerns in the meantime, please feel free to contact Pam or myself. Thank you. And moving right along, we have the superintendent report, the Carmel High School Senior Transition to College Program. And I know we've been very excited to hear what's coming.
Very excited to present this evening the Carmel High School Senior Transition to College Program. The program was developed by Carmel High School leadership to expand opportunities while allowing students to continue the benefit of the structure and support of the environment at Carmel High School. Mr. Williams and Ms. Skey Fisher with us this evening and I appreciate them being here, but as they had discussed with their team and with us, with Amy and I, one of the greatest challenges new college students face when transitioning to college life is handling new freedoms, new experiences, new opportunities, the choices they have, the management of time, the different pace that they're used to in the high school schedule that is, as we all know, driven by a bell system and very routinized. And this program includes opportunities for our high school students, college-level academic courses, including the time needed for studying and preparing and for becoming more of an independent student while still supported in the high school environment. We reviewed this with our legal counsel. We believe, and the counsel believes, that this can be implemented for the 2016-2017 school year under Indiana's Performance Qualified Schools Law, the High Performance Schools Law. We're very excited for the opportunities that we believe this will present for our students, for our seniors next year as they go forward and to see the expansion of this at the high school level. We appreciate all your work, John and Linda and your team, for taking this challenge that we have with high performance and say, what are some things we can do differently that expand opportunities for our children now that will open doors for them as they go into the college environment and post-secondary? We see this as another step to that end. They're, as you recall, incorporating the final exam schedule, which we believe is much more student-centric for this year under high-performance legislation. This is another step in that direction. We'll continue to look for opportunities and strategize and plan for additional opportunities for our students under high-performance legislation, but this year is one, is a year of less talking and more developing and action. So I'm very appreciative of that.
Thank you very much, Dr. Wall. I open up the floor to discussion, questions, comments. Pam?
Yes. As I was reading through this, I ended up having several questions, sorry.
That's okay.
For one, will these be college-level courses that we are offering and will they be for credit at any Indiana college or are they specific to a particular college? And how will the instructors be chosen and will this be a rotating position for teachers so that different teachers have the option or the ability or the opportunity to be able to teach these courses if there are more than one person who wants to do that or is qualified?
To answer your question, these would be our courses that we currently have that are full-way courses. So there will be AP courses, there would be our ACP courses, our Advanced College Project courses, other courses that we have for, in other universities that have dual-credit, our Project Lead the Way courses. So there are current courses that either offer direct college credit, like our ACP courses, or that students would have the opportunity to receive college credit through our AP courses. And so the people that would be chosen to teach these, we have current teachers that are teaching these. For ACP, they have to have certain requirements to be able to teach those courses and that's through Indiana University. They determined these are the requirements to teach them, so teachers that have to meet those requirements to teach them. And what else did you ask?
And if there's more than one teacher that is-
Able to teach that or qualified to teach these classes, is it going to be, will other teachers have the opportunity to rotate in and teach these classes or is it-
Well, that's all with, John does that with his staffing, with his staff, just as he assigns teaching assignments for any courses. He looks at who is the best teacher and he determines that in, all through the staffing process.
And this has to do with the dual-credit also that's going through the Indiana House right now?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And that's a federal thing, the Higher Ed Commission-
Right.
With dual-credit, yeah. It's a federal initiative.
Yeah, but Teresa Lubbers has also been in the middle of that as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
For the state.
And for the students who have the opportunity to do other things during their non-instructional time, those, will they be going to, reporting to an SRT or reporting to somebody first before they get to move around the building?
No. For their non-instructional time, that would be just like when they're in college where they take that non-instructional time where they might use that time to meet with other students in the class to do group work. They might work in the media center to study. With parent permission, they may leave campus, but they won't be checking in during their non-instructional time. It's a way to help students not only to, in that transition, part of it is managing their time and how do they manage that time?
Does that raise any liability issues?
Well, as far as, either the students are going to be on campus or with parent permission, we'll know that they'll be leaving camp.
And the other thing is, I'm really excited to hear about this because, you know, I was at the high school for quite a while and we went through various stages where we had more freedom with our seniors and gave them more opportunities to do off-campus things. And I think this is a great way to take advantage of the high-performing school thing. And I know from my son being at Fisher's, that they are trying something similar to this and the students are really responding very well with the time that they're off and they spend a lot of time in the study areas they have set up, so I'm sure ours will follow suit.
I agree.
I just want to ask, maybe I didn't quite understand. For the example, the Blue Day B1, College and Career Prep Time, if the student has permission, we will know in advance if they're not reporting to school? Otherwise, somehow they will be accountable and they check in with somebody?
Well, if they have permission from the parents, then they're not coming in-
Right.
-at that time. But they're coming in, either they're going to be in the media center, they may be in other designated areas, they may be working-
But we will know that they're-
With other students.
On our property. We'll know that they've checked into school or we don't even know where they are.
Well, John, I don't know if you want to-
So is the question, will we know where they are?
Right. Well, attendance.
Not necessarily.
Do we, are we taking attendance?
Not when they're on their free period.
Okay.
Their college and prep, college and career prep time, there will be no assignment for those students.
Okay.
As Amy said, we'll have a place for them to go, so if they choose to come to school, they will be expected to go to this place. I mean, they can't just walk around the hallway.
Right.
And again, we're doing this with seniors because we believe they can handle this.
Absolutely.
And there are some qualifications that students have to meet in order to participate in this program. Certainly, a student who's had attendance or discipline issues would not be eligible for this program, or at least have to be considered for eligibility for this program. But when they're on their non-class time, as Amy said, they can choose to sleep in if they don't have a B1 class or they may choose to meet some folks at the library. They may choose to come into our school and go to the media center, but that'll be a choice they'll make.
Okay.
At the, it says that if a student is going to withdraw from the program, it says they may do that at any time and return to the traditional school program. If they do that, is that going to impact scheduling? How are they going to just move into another class in the middle of a semester?
Well, I don't know, Amy, if you want to-
That's fine, John. Go ahead.
Obviously, moving into a class once the semester starts, it's going to be limited what classes they can move into. I mean, there are very few classes they could move into in the middle of a semester or even much into a semester.
Right.
So we really want kids who do this, our expectation is they're going to make it through there. And that's one of the reasons why we have that, the criteria for them to be considered for this program. If there is, and we think it will be fairly rare, there is a time when a student either can't do it or maybe they do something that we just don't feel we're comfortable with them doing it. We would place them, we would do that on an individual basis, we would place them in a schedule, a full schedule, might include some study halls, but there would be some accountability for that student at that time.
One of the other things that we haven't talked about, as you look at the high stakes of juniors in high school now, and having been around high school a significant amount of time in the last 20 years, high school students, by the time they get to senior year, we're looking for ways to meaningfully engage them in what they're doing. We believe this will do that and then some because, you know, I've got seniors on my advisory at the high school, their high stakes are junior year. We're looking and Linda's looking and John's looking to get them meaningfully engaged their senior year. And yes, our kids are engaged right now this year, but sometimes it's in courses that may not be as meaningful as what we're presenting now for next year. And, you know, Kathy's seen it, I've seen it, John's seen it, Linda's seen it. We want them engaged in that. I'm very excited for this opportunity because I see them really being engaged in their learning and their classes. You know, I think some unintended consequences of this is we're going to take a significant amount of our seniors, who now may not be as engaged as we'd like them to be, really engaged next year in a way that will, I think, show where they're not engaged in other things that are causing time away from class, attendance things, because they're going to want to do this. I really, this is really exciting. Oh, sure, Kathy.
I think too, what you'll see is when the juniors get wind of this, they're going to step it up a notch too, to be eligible for it.
Absolutely.
And what I really like about it is that they don't just get into this because they applied. There's, they have to take four college-level courses-
Right.
Which, in my experience, I've had students who have taken four or five phys-ed classes just to fill the eight periods and so I've got to think this is going to be a better deal for them.
We think so too.
And to, and also, I do think the high school still takes attendance every period of class, so we'll know if the students show up for class, we'll know that right away because teachers take attendance every period.
Right.
So again, I think it's a great way to kind of reward those students who work so hard anyway. I mean, just give them more.
Well put. Well said.
Other questions? We are very excited and thank you for bringing that. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
I know you've been working on this for a number of years and now-
Thank you, John. Thank you, Linda. Thank your team.
Thank you.
No. Thanks for the thoughtful questions as well.
Next on the agenda, we have the ISDEF update. We turn to Dr. Dudley.
One thing I'd like to put a plug in there before Amy will give you the skinny on where the state is, which is, which will be interesting. But in some of this, and Tricia, I'm not trying to steal your legislative thunder either, but in some of our discussions, we're trying to ferret out what's mandated, what's not, what's meaningful, the challenges of, you know, last week, they're talking about NCLB reauthorization at the federal level, which we're very interested in because it keeps that summative piece hanging over every state's head. If you watched recently, the state of Massachusetts, which was one of the first states out in front, wanting to be core curriculum, wanting to have state tests, they're moving away from that, which is significant in our nation because Massachusetts State tends to lead in certain areas. They're removing themselves from this mix. That's interesting. NCLB will be reauthorized only a few years later than they thought, like seven now.
Yeah.
So those are all things we're interested in and it all feeds into this state testing and what are we testing and, you know, the money associated with making sure you have a summative test from the federal level. And Massachusetts is looking at, and rather than go through that hoop, they're saying, keep the money. Intriguing, something to keep an eye on. So that's kind of on the macro level. So Amy can give you the keen insights as to where the state is with ISDEF.
Well, thank you, Dr. Wall. And I don't know how many keen insights I can give you, but I can give you of where we are today. On November 9, the preliminary scores were released through the parent network to the parents and they were very much preliminary scores and the purpose of releasing those scores was for the parents to have the opportunity to look at those and then if they would like to have their open-ended test, only the open-ended portions, to be rescored. There's a very short window, it was just the week of the 9th through the 13th, which was the rescore window. And they changed the process a little bit before, parents had to initiate the rescore and then they'd contact the school and the school would then go through the process of clicking the buttons. And this year, parents had to go online and do that. And we did have quite a few parents that opted for those rescores during that week and the state actually had more parents than ever opting for rescores as well. But as we said, those were preliminary scores because what they will do, those scores now will be adjusted based on either the form that the students took or the mode of testing between online and paper pencil. Because as they did an additional study, they determined that there were differences between the online and the paper pencil and also between Form 1 and Form 2. So depending on the mode or the form, those scores could be adjusted between 1 to 9 points. And so those scores, that did not, that did not, the preliminary scores did not show that adjustment. So the new scores will show the adjustment to the scores and then also if the students gained any points in the rescores. So the new scores will only go up, they will not go down. And those- And those new scores then will be released to the parents through the Parent Network electronically on December 22nd, so right before the holidays. Parents will have the opportunity to log in if they so choose to see their students' new scores. And then we will get copies of those student reports. They'll be sent to us the week of January 4th, so right when we get back from winter break, we'll receive those. We do expect that our scores in the district, just will, will go along with the state, that our scores will decrease. Looking at the state, the cut scores that the state set, and looking at the amount of decrease in English Language Arts, the average decrease across all grade levels, and this is the state, this is not caramel clay, that the state's average decrease was 15% decrease. And the range was from 12% to 18% based on the grade level. That was for Language Arts. And then for math, the average decrease in the state was 24%. And the range was between 19% and 30% based on the grade level. Yeah. No. So we are expecting a decrease when we look at our scores overall. However, okay, so now that's ISSTAP. As we're looking at making sure that our instruction is just right for our individual students, ISSTAP has nothing to do with it. We're not using ISSTAP to really help us to drive our instruction. We're using our interim assessment, which is our NWA assessment, and we're using our formative and our summative classroom assessments in the classroom. And that is what is helping us to drive our instruction, to make sure that we have that just-right instruction for our students. So ISSTAP is not playing a part in this, nor will it play a part. We're getting ready to start the testing season. It starts very quickly after we return the beginning of March, where we start the testing season again with a new vendor, Pearson. So we've been preparing for that vendor and preparing our computers, making sure that we have all of those things in place to make sure that we will be successful as a district based on whatever they send us. So those are the pieces, yeah.
I heard the rumors that they've changed the graduation test from ECA to ISSTAP. And so the 10th graders will not only have to take an ISSTAP English 10, but also a ECA English 10 in the same year?
For this year, that is correct.
Why?
Well, okay, for it, for next year, they will only take ISSTAP. For this year, as they phase out for accountability purposes, they will need to take the ISSTAP. For graduation qualifying, for this year, they need to take the ECA. So our 10th grade students will need to take, they'll take both ISSTAP English Language Arts, and they'll take the 10th grade English ECA.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And next on our agenda, we have our legislative update. And to that, we'll turn to Mrs. Hackett.
Thanks, Leila. Yes, this kind of flows right along here. Superintendent Wall and I have begun our meeting with legislators as they prepare for their short 2016 session. Highlights from our October 30th meeting with Senator Kenley include his agreement that any future referendum be worded in, so the voters truly know how, what they're voting for, not just, currently the language just says, "I agree to raise my taxes X amount," or "I don't agree for that." So there's some various language that would help a voter know exactly what they're voting for. He agrees. He, Senator Kenley will continue his efforts for a state system which emphasizes benchmark formative testing and de-emphasize the federally mandated summative testing. And Senator Kenley expressed some disagreement with our initiative to allow MOUs at any time during the year, even if the board and the exclusive representative are in agreement, as this could create some unintended consequences. So when we were talking with him, we agreed to check into this a little further. Then, highlights from our November 19th meeting with Representative Jerry Torre included his suggestion to talk with Representative Kathy Richardson, who is the Elections and Apportionment Committee Vice Chair, about some of the particulars of holding a referendum special election or mail-in balloting for referendum renewal, and some things along those lines, which we agreed to do. And we actually have done some of that. He was very receptive to the initiative to emphasize formative testing over summative testing also. And again, he expressed some concern about expanding the MOUs, the use of MOUs in other areas which potentially might not represent the majority of teachers. That's where our conversation really keyed into with him. So this brings me to the issue of our fourth legislative priority. Nick spoke with the ISBA Executive Director, Brian Smith, to further understand this priority as it was initiated through ISBA. Dr. Smith relayed that some districts thought this might be helpful, but the ISBA was really more interested in adjusting the timeline of when formal negotiations can take place. And they were less passionate about the MOU portion, which is the portion that we adopted. We didn't make that first part one of our priorities. In addition, Amy Matthews of Church Churchill and Atrium, who happened to be sitting with us at the Hamilton County Legislative Luncheon on Friday, she advised us, we were kind of talking over with her, and she said one of the issues is mid-year contractual changes could be missed by the annual IRB legal review. So a lot of people are looking at this from a lot of different angles. So what I put to you is, considering that both Senator Kenley and Representative Torre expressed some concerns about unintended consequences, I'm suggesting that we all kind of individually think about this a little bit more. We had other things that we discussed that were important to us but didn't necessarily raise to the level of priority. And in hearing some of these conversations, I'm thinking that we might want to back off on this. We've already sent this out, obviously, to a lot of legislators, but in ongoing communications, possibly dropping that fourth priority. And I, I want to give people time to think about this, but possibly action vote on this at our December meeting. Yes, keep it, no, drop it, and then we can know how to move on from there.
One of the things that Senator Kenley informed us, and some of you may know this, in the spirit of unintended consequences, when the original law passed, Anderson School District extended their CBA eight years, which was clearly not the intention of the law. So he said that's something just to be aware of because that was, that was problematic. And the MOU could feed into that, which isn't fair to any community. It's just some history.
And it was really nice, I mean, it kind of showed the nature of our conversations. It was a real give and take.
Yeah, truly.
And so we're learning some information on this. So I put that out there to think about that and put that possibly on the agenda for December. And then from there, I just want to let you know that Nick and I have upcoming meetings scheduled with Representative Shively, Senator Cruz, Speaker Bosma, and a representative from United States Senator Coats Office and Senator Donnelly's Office. So we have a busy couple of weeks coming up. Then, as I mentioned before, several of us attended the November 20th Hamilton County Legislative Luncheon that was held with Noblesville. There's the county plus Zinesville goes together, and we do this every year. It was probably, I think we all agreed, one of the best ones we've ever been to. Really good conversation. They held it at a lunch instead of an evening, which was, just allowed different people to not be able to attend, but other ones to attend. And I don't know if that was part of it, or if different people are up for reelection or what it was, but there was some really good keying conversation. Some of the key education issues emphasized by the legislators included methods to retain the best and the brightest in teaching, they're really looking at that more closely, state assistance to better front-load salary schedules. I'm not sure how they're going to address that during a short session, but glad they're talking about it. Continued proportional waivers for the protected levy in relation to property tax cap losses, which is one of our priorities. A through F grading adjustments because of effects from the new ISSTAP. Adjustments of testing requirements to balance formative and summative testing, obviously something near and dear to our hearts. And adjustments to some referendum requirements, especially when renewal does not fall in an election year. So that's kind of where some of our conversation with Kathy Richardson came and got some intellectual juices flowing. Then it was also mentioned, at the federal level, a congressional conference committee has approved a bill, Form Act, that will revise in 2002 No Child Left Behind legislation. It appears that this updated version would maintain annual testing but significantly lessen the federal role in education policy. States would regain the power to determine whether and how to use those tests to assess the performance of schools, teachers, and students. It looks like it'll be next month when they actually vote on this, which suddenly seems around the corner since it's taken them so many years to get to this point. But that's where we stand on that. And that concludes my report, and I'll send this on to the board, so you'll have a hard copy of all this.
Thank you, Tricia. And you had a great summary of the discussions that we had with the legislators on Friday. I did like that format. I liked that it was at lunchtime. Well, I know you didn't, but we had all the represented, there was one who was unable to come. But because they mingled with everybody, it was, it was, the format really lent itself all to some really good communication. So conversations were, were flowing, and it was exciting to get a little perspective from Kathy Richardson.
I think she appreciated the conversation on some options so that school districts are not hamstrung by the seven-year length on referendums, which no one could give any definitive answer as to why seven was the magic number. Because it lines up with no eight-year cycle or anything like that. So it's really, really very good.
From our end, you know, we have educators that then every seven years need to look at spending their time in a different way out of the educational realm. But then others added, Kathy being one of them, well, from her end, it's, a seven years is kind of problematic. So how can we look at this from a variety of angles to benefit everybody? Which is really good.
And that is one thing that I did pick up from Senator Kenley. When we have a concern, they want it coupled with a, with a solution.
With a solution.
So if we have concerns, send solutions onward, so they have some, something to sink their teeth into.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because I think that that's maybe one area, the testing keeps coming up, and there seems to be legislators that we've talked to so far very supportive of moving more to that formative, and with states getting that, looks like getting more of that power, that I would maybe ask for our administrators to kind of think of what some of those suggestions might be. I don't want it necessarily to come from me, the board member, but we'll have these upcoming meetings to have some, maybe solutions, solution ideas attached to that priority.
And we're working on language now with David regarding the 30-day window around when school starts about releasing teachers. How can that be more teacher-friendly, student district-friendly, as well as principals? So we're actually working on language at the suggestion of the legislator, so they could consider it.
Nice, good, thanks.
Thank you, Tricia. Any other questions or comments? Okay. For board member report, and it's not officially on the agenda, but Nick did circulate a tentative schedule for next year. Yes, Kathy?
I will not be teaching or giving a final on the first Monday, or the second Monday in December next year. I know that's why we moved the meeting for next month. So unless there's a holiday or something, I mean, we could go back to the second Monday. Depends on everybody else's schedule.
Yeah, it's truly up to you guys. Thank you, Kathy.
Are we... Which one is this, Kathy?
December.
The December 12th. The December meeting, we had shifted it...
To the Tuesday.
To the Tuesday. But before we officially move it to Monday, I do want to check to see if there's any holidays that we need to...
Yeah, please.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the calendar?
What about the other ones? When we were suggesting other days, you know, are we going to go ahead and have it on the day? Because it said, so we could move this to a different day of week. I mean, there are a couple of them like that, so what are we doing with those?
That's up to you guys. Whenever you want to have them.
The June 13th and the October 24th dates are okay to keep as those dates. We've already conferred, and those are okay to, to keep on those Mondays. So the only day that we really is up for discussion would be the 12th, and we will take a look a little further at that to confirm that we can adjust it. And statute just requires us to post this by December 31st for the following year. So we have some time, and so we will go ahead and take a look at that and send any changes to the board, and then we'll take action at our December meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
The race Butler offered me was not enough to keep me.
Any other announcements? Big one, we don't have school on Wednesday. Hooray. Yes, tomorrow is the school day. And with that, I hope everybody has very safe travels and enjoys their family over the Thanksgiving holiday. Meeting adjourned.